Twenty seven Plan and Commission, please come to order. Welcome all the commission members and everyone here this evening. Would you please stand to the Pledge of the Flag?
Flag of the United States of America. Public for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free.
Let the records reflect the members that are here this evening. Also, I'd like to welcome Ollie Glass back to the commission.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ollie. I think you know everyone here. The commission members should have received the minutes, draft minutes, of July 28th, 2025. Any corrections or additions to those minutes?
We're going to get rid of the extra E in Dan's name in the one, two, three, fourth paragraph.
Okay, we won't count the typos. Any other comments? Then I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes from last month.
Second.
Second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carrie, thank you. Propagation and action items. Update review of BCA case 2025, 231, 125. Thomas Street variance.
So, we talked about this one last night. It's coming up this week, but something that we didn't talk about last month. We talked about the setback challenges for the corner lot, but it occurred to me after that that combining these two lots is still only going to give us 6,250 square feet. So, it's still below the minimum lot size in the R-7500 district. We had a similar situation on Ridge Avenue, a block away, where a builder wanted to take four of these existing 25-foot-wide lots and consolidate them into two 50-foot-wide lots. And they had to get a variance to do that because each lot would still be under the 7,500-square-foot minimum for the district. So, that's going to be a factor in this case as well. So, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that piece of it, as well as the setbacks. It didn't cross my mind last week, last month.
That's, I don't think that's going to change our recommendation that we made.
I wouldn't expect it, but I did want to be aware.
I don't expect it, but how far below is it, do you know?
Well, 62 to 65.
Oh, 60.
I mean, 62 to 75.
I didn't hear the 62 part, my bad. Okay.
But there's other lots down there that are the same, same-sized lots, the 62, whatever they were.
Right, there are some homes on, built across, and years ago, we would just have permitted a house to go across three or four lots. With the ones on Ridge Avenue, we were trying to kind of bring it up to, I guess, a more current standard and actually have them consolidate the two lots into one lot so the house won't cross a lot line. So, that's really the proper way to do it. And I wanted to be consistent with what we did on Ridge Avenue because we had them consolidate the four lots into two.
Two lots.
Two lots. So, you know, 20 years ago, we would have just issued a zoning certificate to build across lots, you know, 38 and 39, or whatever it was, because it met the setbacks or what have you. So, just trying to up our game a little.
That meeting is Wednesday, right?
I believe it is.
Is it 7:30, same as ours?
Yeah, the 27th is 7:30.
Anyone have any comments before we move on?
Righty. So, in your packet, moving on, I assume?
Yes.
Is the draft Tawnytown segment of the Carroll County Water Resources Element update. We are hoping that, I hope everybody had a chance to look through there. We did share this also with our Public Works Department, who reviewed it and didn't have any comments or recommendations. And of course, Public Works has been working with the county throughout developing the water resource element. So, you know, the figures that are in here have all come from our data to begin with, but DPW has reviewed this draft and didn't have any questions or comments about it as well. So, what we're really looking for tonight is approval to let this go out to the state agencies for the 60-day review. It will come back before you again after the state has offered their comments on it and any revisions have been made by the county. So, this is not for final approval, this is just to let it go to the state for 60-day review.
Okay, so we're probably looking at 2027 for final approval.
Most likely.
What effect will this have, if any, with our comp plan?
Yeah. I did, I did provide a copy of this to Craig and Emily once, once this revised draft came out. So, we're going to try to coordinate these two. And, and again, this is built on, as Emily was saying last, last week, that a lot of the data was using the 2023, or was using 2023 data for the figures in our, our comp plan update. So, this should be consistent with that. We will want to go through before anything is actually adopted to try to make sure that we're consistent between the two plans. And also, and again, Public Works has had input in, in both versions of the water resource element. So, you know, we're doing our best to coordinate them, but the timing of it is going to be, it seems to vary every couple of months between, you know, who I think is going to get to the finish line first. But I think by the time, you know, eight, eight municipalities and the county all approve the final product, it may be after our comp plan is, I think our comp plan will be out to review by that point. It may not be approved yet, though. So, it's.
When, or when and who does, is there a public hearing on this?
So, there will be a public hearing.
After the review?
So, that will be, that'll be after comments come back from the 60-day review. I know there is, and I will email out the schedule to you guys, I don't have it in front of me, but there will be a, I believe the county is trying to actually do a joint hearing, which may be a virtual format between the county planning commission and the municipal planning commissions. I do not have a date for that at this point, but I think that is seen as the ideal way to get approval for the whole water resource element. So, I would imagine each, each municipality is going to approve their, you know, their segment of it, but there probably also needs to be some overall approval.
By, by having concern or comments?
Just a question. So, in here we talk about the plan for a surface water system, and I've seen that noted other times. Can you elaborate on where or what that is? I know what a surf, I, I think it's, you skim water off of a stream, right?
Right, right. There, yeah, there has been talk about, about Pipe Creek, I believe is, I always get, I always get Pipe.
Up this way.
And Bear Run mixed up as to which is which. I believe it's Pipe Creek actually has a decent base flow, and the idea of, of doing an intake from that source has been discussed off and on for quite a few years. It's not currently in our capital improvement program, it's not envisioned to be in the, you know, that six-year range by any means, but it has been talked about as being a supplemental source of water that could be used to preserve the aquifer. I don't think how the timing would be if we would use that in the, in the winter months to let the aquifer better recharge, so then if the stream flow is down in the summer, we pump more from the groundwater. It's been a few years, well, more than a few years since we really talked about it. I think.
You'd need to dam up the, put in a dam, or?
There, there was some talk of, as one of the former city managers referred to it, as a small impoundment area because he didn't want to use the term reservoir. But I don't know if that's necessarily the way it would have to be done. I think there, there's the possibility of just a, an intake pipe.
Yeah.
But there's been no engineering or anything done like that. And we've, we've, we've really kind of refrained from it because groundwater is really the, the least expensive way to provide the water for the city at this point.
Well, it just, I've, I've seen it a couple of times now, and it seemed pretty definite, like it was in the plans when I read this, so that's why I was asking.
Matter of fact, there were some drawings of the area that would be affected by the dam. How far back that goes, Ollie, that goes way back. Chris?
Good evening, everyone. One of the things that may enter into the conversation and change the dynamic of it is PFAS. Because if the remedies of trying to filter our existing wells are too expensive, it may actually end up being cheaper to start pulling the surface water because that's less susceptible to the PFAS. Just a thought.
Any other questions? All right. I guess you'll keep us informed as progress goes on with this, then.
Before we move on, do we, I would like to get something for the minutes showing that we're either approving it for review.
What are you actually looking for? We don't want a motion for approval.
Approval to send for review.
Okay, yeah, okay. Should I put that in the motion? Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you read that motion back?
Barry moved to approve release of the water resources element for 60-day review.
Okay, good.
Thought that's what he said.
I did too, but I wanted to make sure that the public might have heard that too the same way. All right. Moving on. Coordinates in agreement, there's none. Jim, you got a report for us, and you missed it, or didn't I?
Not a written report.
Okay, then I didn't, okay.
So, an item of recent discussion, and this has come up with regard to Flowserve and the idea of, of them providing an easement across their property for the future road. They have asked the city if there could be some flexibility in the restricted industrial district that would allow some businesses that would be like support businesses for the employees of the industries in the district. We've, we've had some conversations years ago about, and, and it was actually for a 22-acre property, kind of at the end of Allendale Lane where it makes the 90-degree left, the property kind of in front of that, this 22 acres, there was discussion about allowing some flex space in that project. And of course, that project never came to fruition, and when that sort of fizzled, so did the conversation about that, allowing those, you know, we'll call it ancillary uses, I guess, for the industry. But both Flowserve and Evapco have, in, you know, conversation brought up the idea that they would like for there to be a daycare center closer to their operation for their employees to be able to drop kids off, pick them up, you know, and then be right next door to work, or practically, you know, much closer to work.
That's not allowed now?
So, it, it, that would be allowed in the general business district currently, but not in industrial. So, things like, and I'm picturing many, many years ago, I worked at a banking operations center, and the building next to us was also kind of a, like a flex space building, it had some garage-type uses, you know, with the roll-up doors, and then the next one was a, a little deli, and then there was another office. It was kind of a hodgepodge, but it all sort of worked to support the other buildings within that office park. And I think that's the, the kind of flexibility that, that Flowserve is looking for, that, you know, if they, if they may eventually, you know, expand their manufacturing operation, they want to maintain that ability, so they're not really looking to have the remainder portion of their property, say the road does go through, and they're left with this sort of detached, you know, I don't remember how many acres it is, it's over 10 acres, I believe, but they would like to have some flexibility that maybe, maybe there could be medical offices or something that their employees would use, you know, on that other half of the property. So, we've talked about there possibly being some sort of an overlay zone that could be applied, you know, on a property-by-property basis, and we would need to figure out, you know, minimum acreages, whether there needed to be an industrial use on the parcel itself, or if it could be, you know, contiguous to a manufacturing parcel. But just that, that general idea of offering some flexibility for businesses that would, you know, essentially be of benefit for the employees of the manufacturers, for them to be in close proximity is, is what they're asking for. So, we will probably be back at a future meeting with some, some draft ideas on it, but at this point, we're thinking probably an overlay would be the best approach to it because we don't want to, you know, we, we don't want to really compromise the overall intent of the zoning district, you know, and get away from the manufacturing and have like all-service businesses. But that, that's something that Flowserve has been looking for, is some, some flexibility, you know, and, and that's a way that they would look at the city as sort of, kind of partnering with them on the, on their future.
But off-site, they're looking for something off-site, not necessarily within their own building, like.
Right, not within the manufacturing building, but, right, but within the same zoning district.
That would support the employees or have the employees option for whatever.
Yeah, I think it sounds like a good idea. I think the other way around might be bad if, like, if you had a house and they put an industrial building beside you, that probably would be bad, but in this particular case, if you're putting up a sandwich shop, you know what's there, and you, and so.
Right.
As long as the kids aren't like dancing around in toxic sludge, we should be, we should be good to go.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think it's a good idea, too. I think it's something we need to think about, and really, we ought to be able to work it into our, our comp plan, too. I mean, that's a plus.
I mean, that could be.
Yeah, a plus, and we can put that in a comp plan somewhere. That's a plus.
I agree.
Right, that could be a recommended action, yeah.
Chris?
One thing I would add to that, one other place where that kind of an overlay might be useful, I've mentioned in the past about when we go to, if we use community village, a community village overlay in the areas of high density, perhaps allowing some minor commercial use in the high-density portion of a community village, so that if you have R-7500, there's no commercial in that, but if you had the, in the community village overlay, you've got areas of townhouses in very high concentrations, and maybe that, there would be a small strip center with a dry cleaner and an H&R Block office, or something small like that. It may, just something to think about as a, as, if, if, you know, that kind of overlay that could apply to not only the industrial parcels, but also in, in the community village density parcels also.
But not a commercial, but maybe general business.
Yeah, general, yeah. More, more, yeah, more general business than commercial, but yeah.
Stay away from the commercial, if, if you're dealing with the residential.
Right, day, daycare, sandwich shop, dry cleaner, that kind of thing.
Daycare, whatever. Okay, I don't recall that, but okay.
But yeah, and that would, the words are coming out of my mouth, that would actually go with the comp plan's version of trying to keep things more on a local and walkable area and keep things accessible. I'll be crying in the corner now.
Okay. So, and on a, on a related note, and this is another thing from the dialogue ongoing discussion with Flowserve, is currently our code is silent on solar energy generating facilities. So, rooftop solar, we've, you know, done as, as an accessory use, you know, we've got countless, you know, houses with solar panels on the roof at this point. I'm not aware of any ground-mounted solar, but the question has come up before, and when I've been the zoning administrator or acting as zoning administrator, you know, I've responded at inquiries that we would treat that like an accessory structure. So, you know, if, if, you know, a shed needs to be five feet off the property line and 10, you know, outside of any utility easements, so would a ground-mounted, you know, solar panel, and, you know, they're, for residential use, you know, there are small, you know, ground-mounted panels that track the movement of the sun and things like that, that are supposed to be very effective and very efficient compared to fixed panels. But nobody's, to the best of my knowledge, nobody has followed through and actually gotten a permit to do one yet. But some manufacturers, you know, including Flowserve, have talked about doing ground-mounted solar on a portion of their property to help offset their energy costs. So, again, thinking about looking at the restricted industrial district, I don't know that we want to make solar generating facilities a by-right permitted use, because I don't know if that's the best and highest use of the land, because, you know, it doesn't create permanent jobs, things like that. I would imagine the tax increase based on having solar panels is very modest compared to what we would get if somebody put a building on a site, as far as the assessed value and the revenue towards the city. So, I don't know that, you know, 20 acres of solar panels is the best use of industrial land for us, but I think it, it needs to be allowed in some fashion. So, again, maybe as an ancillary use or accessory use to a, you know, permitted use in the district, so that, you know, say an Evapco or a Flowserve or a Tawny Stare or whomever, you know, if they have five acres, you know, off in the corner that they're not utilizing, that they could do ground-mounted solar, you know, on a portion of their property. And again, you know, what the proportion could be or should be would all need to be worked out, but the general idea would be for it to be an accessory use to, you know, an industrial use on the property. So, again, that, that may be coming before you in, in the next couple of months.
There's no cost for the city for water or sewer, please?
And those, right, those are the upsides for it, right. There's no, right, it's very low impact on the city.
Low impact on the city.
Right.
But it contributes to the instability of the electric grid, which we have issues with in Tawnytown as it is. Because this, that's what, that's one of the contributing things, if you remember, about a month and a half ago, the entire Spanish Peninsula went down with electric. It was because of, they were using, they've, they've switched over to a lot of solar, and it's actually balancing the, the waves of the AC, and they have to basically fake it with solar as opposed to spinning generation that has that built, that oscillation built into it. And when you get a mismatch like they had, because they had a bunch of solar and they had, and they had a, they took down the entire grid for the entire peninsula of Spain and, and Portugal. So, again, stuff to think about when it comes up.
But we don't have anything in our ordinance yet about solar panels, other than.
No.
We should start thinking, someone should start thinking about that before.
And again, this is another one of those things that, that we've had some conversations about, and then it just never, you know, comes to fruition as far as like an actual text amendment to allow it.
Everything takes time, and it seems like time is something we don't have.
So, you know, I think the, the current thinking is to, you know, add some language to the restricted industrial district that would allow ground-mounted solar as, you know, an accessory use to an industry, you know, or a permitted use within the district. Wouldn't be, you know, a 20-acre solar farm, and that would be it on a parcel, you know. And again, using Flowserve as our example, a road goes in and splits their property in half, they may want to, you know, and of course, with tariffs, they're trying to keep their options open, because, you know, that may impact them in a way that it makes sense for them to manufacture something in the U.S. that's currently manufactured overseas. So, they want to keep their options open, but say, you know, in the next 10 years, they don't have any plans to expand, but their employees are clamoring for, you know, a daycare nearby, and their energy costs are soaring, say, they could consider, you know, on that remaining parset or remaining acreage, they could develop a portion of it for, you know, a daycare center or little deli convenience store, and they could put solar panels on however many acres of it.
Yeah.
So, that, that's the sort of thing that we're looking at. So, that'll be coming back before you, hopefully, in the next, next few months.
Okay.
I'm going to say hopefully before December. We don't normally meet in December, so that only gives, only gives a couple of months, so. Let's see, next month is shaping up to be a much busier agenda. I've had conversations with, on three different projects. One is a, currently they're saying a data center off Allendale Lane. Our code, of course, is silent on data centers, that wasn't a thing the last time our code was updated. So, speaking of energy demands and concern about the grid, that, that really would be, you know, my number-one question is not going to be how many people are employed there, how big the building is going to be, it's going to be.
Energy, water.
What's that going to be?
Energy and water, and the two things that we don't have a ton of.
Well, water would be recycled, because it'd be a cooling tower situation for cooling. So, most of that would be recycled.
They, they use a lot of fresh water. The, the data centers, the data centers use a lot of fresh water.
That was, that was, that was one of my curiosities, I guess, was the cooling and whether it is a recycling-type system or it's a, you know, a lot of fresh water intake.
I don't know how much of it is recycling, but I know that that's one of the things they're running to, into in Virginia, is it's a lot of fresh water, as well as the electric for the power lines that want to go through the farms.
So, that, that may, there may be a concept plan in the next couple of months for that. We have a pre-submitting meeting scheduled for that one. We also have a pre-submitting meeting for a fast-food restaurant at the, well, actually two fast-food restaurants, one at the Tawnytown Shopping Center. The McDonald's site is going to be reimagined, and also across the street from the shopping center where Rob's Tower Motors, I guess, was the most recent business, where that building was demolished a year or so ago. That would be another fast-food restaurant. They're planning to reconfigure the two lots, which are currently oriented, one lot against the street, then one lot in the rear. They're going to reorient them to be two lots side by side. They have a tenant lined up for the western lot, the one that would be next door to Restoration Cottage that's out there. So, that is potentially going to be before you next month.
While you're on that site, that's where the old gas station stuff used to be. Is there a clean bill of health, health with EPA, with the old gas tanks, all that stuff being removed?
I have not seen anything to the contrary. And we, we do get notifications from MDE, from their, um, oil monitoring program about ongoing monitoring of, of underground tanks within the city. So my assumption is if there was any, um, any detrimental effect from those tanks being removed years ago, that MDE would be keeping us abreast of that. But to the best of my knowledge, the tanks came out cleanly, no leaks or anything were, were, you know, discovered or identified at that point.
And the third?
Uh, let's see. And also been having conversations with another retailer that seems to be looking at the shopping center for the, um, the former grocery store area within the shopping center. They would also require an outdoor, uh, display area that would be fenced in, so that will end up coming before you, assuming they do move forward with it. Because even putting up a fence for commercial use triggers our site plan ordinance, so it may be a scenario where they come with a basic site layout requesting a waiver of the site plan approval requirements because they're going to be moving into an existing building, but this outdoor display and sales area would be something that would trigger a site plan requirement. But of course, there's not going to be any stormwater because it's already impervious. They may need to seek a variance on the number of parking spaces because they would be taking up a bunch of parking with this display area. So with, with, uh, with, I think, all of these, there may be some variances involved. So the, the sequence I'm trying to work through with the developers is that they will come here, present their concept, and then also you'll be briefed on their Board of Appeals hearings, basically at the same time that they present their concept so that you can make any comments you want for the Board of Appeals. And then hopefully we will come back after those cases have been heard to seek approval for the concept plans. So I'm hoping that, that we can follow that sequence with it and minimize the times that it comes before you, so.
That'd be Conawaygo, right? You're talking about Conawaygo contractors?
Right, so for the shopping center, it would be that one, yes.
Okay.
Right, the McDonald's is actually a standalone.
Conawaygo's too, right? That's Conawaygo's too, right?
The McDonald's, the McDonald's actually was subdivided off from the shopping center, so that's, that's under separate ownership now. That was divided off some years ago. Right, so, so again, you know, we, we hopefully will have three different concept plans next month as well as the preliminary plan for the DPW building. We didn't have that this month because we didn't get the site posted in time. That's about all that I have for you.
Unless somebody's got some comments, let's move on to our active projects.
Tawny Town Supply resubmitted, that's the plan set that's on the table there for you this evening.
Question about that. Okay, Tony Supply, we're talking about the hardware store, possible hardware store, right?
Tawny Town.
Wait, that is...
Yeah, this is Storage Today.
The plans are for the Storage today.
Got my plans mixed up, sorry. Now, there's a comment letter for Tawny Town Supply, it wasn't there.
Yes.
Okay.
My question about Tony Supply, as you're heading past Kraus, are we still talking about the lot on the west side of Antrim Boulevard, not the east side?
We've seen the for sale sign as well. Well, it's, if that's whose sign it is, it's on the wrong property. Not, not...
Now you're on the wrong side of the road.
Defatta doesn't, the Defatta property doesn't, um, doesn't front Antrim. So it, it stops, uh, pretty much even with the shopping center property. So no, no, so if, if that's, right, so if that's, um, as I said, we've seen a for sale sign on the prop, property, but, and I know that, um, Planning Director Hale had inquired if there were any changes or anything that CLSI was aware of, and at that point, um, they hadn't been, you know, told to stop work on the project or anything, so.
So we're still on the concept?
As far as, as far as we're concerned, it's still under review, albeit a very slow-moving project.
So it'd be actually going, going south, it's on the right-hand side. The 14 acres where there's only like so many acres available for building, correct? Past Lorian, past Lorian, on Lorian's side.
Side is Lorian, yes. Past Lorian.
All right.
Yep, so there's, Lorian owns the lot adjacent to the existing Lorian facility, and then there's the little road stub area. And then the property slated for Tawny Town Supply is basically that piece that runs all the way, you know, includes the wetland and forest conservation area and everything out towards, it goes all the way out to Terranian.
Because there was questions about, or I've received questions about, on the opposite side of the road, I guess it was the Feser property, that was going to be the hardware store location. They're just, so everyone's straight...
Nothing has been submitted for that. But I understand that...
The original plans that we have are the ones we're talking about.
They, right, they're, that is still the, that's still the plan to the best of our knowledge.
So you guys, if you've got plans, did you get the plans, the original concept plans for the hardware store?
Uh, no, but...
I shouldn't say hardware store, it should be Tony Supply.
No, but I'm, I'm good with rolling at the moment.
Okay.
We can, I can probably dig up a, a copy or two.
I think I have three or four.
But it's, it's, uh...
So you've got all of them?
Yeah. That's been moving so slowly, when they are ready to resubmit, I don't know what kind of changes, you know, the comment letters are, are pushing, but it may be a good idea just even if the, even if the changes are relatively minor, just to get a fresh set in front of everybody to make sure we're all looking at the same version.
Sounds good.
When we, when we get to that point, I'll make sure that we get a fresh set for everybody. So then on Storage Today...
Storage Day, which you gave us stuff.
They finally gave a resubmit. Onto subdivisions, Garnet Ridge...
Wait a minute, before you jump for that.
Oh.
Any big changes on this, on the ones for Storage Today? So when we look through it, we know what we're looking for.
I have not reviewed it yet.
Moyau Park, where's that stand?
No update, still waiting for the engineer to resubmit, which hopefully was going to be, and hopefully this week, because they were talking about submitting back the, the revised plan to State Highway and the county at the end of August. So we're still waiting on that from Arrow.
I think the general consensus of the commission here, we want to see that sidewalk. Am I correct, I'm not, I don't want to speak for everyone, but...
Well, I'd, I'd like to see the sidewalk, but I'm not going to fall on my sword over that one.
Pardon me?
I, I would like to see the sidewalk, but if it like stopped the entire project, I'm not, I think we should be considering something else.
But we're still in favor of the sidewalk.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm, I'm the same way. I'd like to see the sidewalk, but I'd like to see the expansion more.
Chris, you had another comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I was looking very quickly at the GIS map and there is a separate parcel. So you're right, the Defatta parcel doesn't come all the way out to Antrim Boulevard, but from Lorian, between Lorian and the LAP property, there is a separate parcel in there, and that is the one that's for sale. So the, it's not the LAP property that's for sale, it's the...
In between.
Other one in between.
I thought the sign was on the far side of the driveway, but...
Yeah, it is.
It's right at that, you know, if you can, you know, I could show you the, the thing right here, but it's right at that end.
I think we understand, there's, there's two sale signs up there now, there's two signs.
There's two?
Yeah.
Okay.
One's a little bit bigger than the other. All right. Now, active subdivisions.
Okay, Garnet Ridge, there's, CDM Smith has reviewed the, has some comments on their pumping station design, so that's going to be, the comment letter wasn't finalized in time to get it out to you guys, so that'll be, you'll see that in your next packet. So they're moving along, but again, pretty slowly. So hopefully they'll be able to address those pumping station comments and we have seen some...
Jim, I was wondering, we were talking before, but that sign changed out there. Where Garnet Ridge sign was, it's not there.
Yeah, it's gone.
Just curious.
Now says the link's at Gettysburg.
So we need to follow up with them on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was my question, since it's on the list, is it still a thing?
Yep. It, it is, so again, hopefully they'll be able to address those comments quickly and get that one moving along. Uh, that's, we don't have any news on any of the other projects. Recovery 180, you may have noticed they're, you know, under construction out there now, so, you know, some of the concrete's gone in, the sidewalks and such, so.
There is another question, why they removed the sod and gravel, now they're planting grass back in there again. Talking about right next to the Harney Road. So is that going to remain grass? I thought the sidewalk, something about a sidewalk or something was going in there. Why did, did they dig it up originally?
I would need to take a look back at that plan because I, I did, and my recollection may be off because I, you know, have, was not all that engaged for, you know, most of the time Recovery 180 was going through the process, but I had thought that there was going to be sidewalk along the Harney Road frontage. However, knowing that they also were deeding, and this is part of what took so long for that project to get through the final steps with the county, was they were deeding a portion of the property to the State Highway Administration and then a portion of it to the county for Harney Road improvements, that I don't know if that sidewalk is, it ended up on the final plan or if it's moved away from the road, because it really wouldn't make sense for them to put in curb, gutter and sidewalk on a road that's going to be reconfigured when the adjacent property develops. So I, I would need to go back and take a look at that plan.
Yeah, I, I think that was one of our errors. We, we gave final approval on that project with continuing something.
It was the, it was the plat to deed the right of way to the state, and that took months to get through. Yes.
They say that could come off of here then, right?
Well, they're still under, they're still under construction. So, uh...
Okay, I understand we leave that on here.
Yeah, so I believe they had, I believe they had stormwater management because they ended up disturbing more than, having more than 5,000 square feet of impervious area. So typically, we would keep a project like that open until the infrastructure is finished and has been inspected, and then we can release their surety and such. So that one will probably stay on for a while.
Okay. Else on any other?
Oh, um, I, there's a fourth project potentially for next month, and that will be another parking lot for Evapco.
That again?
So, uh, Evapco is, is planning to develop an additional parking lot on the property, I guess, that will be towards, towards Tony Stare, north on FSK Highway from the parking lot that's under construction now. So it'll be, I guess, kind of down the hill from the parking lot that's under construction now. So that, we expect to have a concept plan for, again, for next month, so they've been working with, um, a different engineer who hasn't worked in the city for quite a while, so that one's generated a lot of procedural questions and such from the engineer. So we may have a fourth concept plan, so next month is shaping up to be a busy one.
Okay. Don't see how Tawny Town, I wonder if these schools could be ready in a week. They've got those blacktops cut up, three different spots. I've been doing my inspections nightly. All right. Anything from Tiffany?
On your, on the table this evening was an update that Tiffany provided, so just some updates there on the Water and Sewer Master Plan. And, uh, yeah, just the highlight on that is that the Board of Commissioners did vote to, to adopt the amendment, so. Quickly there. I believe the commissioners did, did vote to adopt the amendment, so that'll be moving on to MDE for their review. The, the only amendment that we had was the... Harney Road with a spring amendment, so the fall amendment was, it was the Stone Slifer Road property that is, we had talked about at our comp plan meeting, that one of the ones that wanted to come out of the growth area. So they have been pursuing ag preservation and they hit a, a snag with the fact that it was still in the water and sewer long-range service area, and that apparently derailed their attempts to get a, an ag preservation easement. So we put in an amendment request to take that out of the long-range service area and put it into a no-service area. So that will hopefully allow them to have a little more success with the next round of ag preservation application.
But didn't we buy three acres?
We bought four acres.
Four acres.
Yes. And that was appended to property the county had acquired to preserve the bypass alignment. Yes. But when we did that, we didn't, um, we didn't foresee the need to take them out of the Water Sewer Master Plan long-range service area, thinking that that would happen as part of our comprehensive plan update. And we didn't anticipate that it would cause problems for ag preservation, but apparently it did, at least at the state level. So I think when we were talking initially, they were looking at a county easement, but then they applied for a Maryland easement instead. So, so that was our, our fall amendment for the Water and Sewer Plan. I probably don't need to, to read Tiffany's report to you, you guys can take a look at that. And we do have, the mayor and I have a meeting coming up with comprehensive planning this coming Friday, I believe it is, just to, I guess, make sure that the county is aware of, of the city's direction and so on with, with us, you know, both updating our comprehensive plans at the same time, not to mention the water resource element, the county is also updating as kind of a standalone effort. So we'll be meeting with the Bureau Chief for Comprehensive Planning, Daphne Daly, and Chris Heim, the Director of Land Use and Planning, this week, just to make sure that we're hopefully staying synchronized with the county. If anybody has questions when you look this over, feel free to shoot me an email and I'll, or give me a call, and I'll dig up the answers for you.
If we're lucky.
If we're lucky, she can, she can take the stage.
She came in right at her time.
She's doing great, Jim. I mean, Harry left off, though.
We covered the, uh...
We covered the, the fall amendment to the water sewer master plan, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Andrew emailed that the Commissioners did approve that, and it was going on to MDE. And I was just advising the Commission that the mayor and I will be meeting with, with Daphne and Chris, and I understand you'll be there as well on Friday, as far as the comprehensive plan stuff goes, so that's what I covered. And then you came in to save me.
Your appearance.
I know that, I don't want to get stopped on your main street, so I made sure I did the speed limit here. I just finished for the, the housing, housing work group.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay, we ran a little bit late tonight, we finished at about 7:30, which means all the housing, I mean, the work groups for the master plan, as of now, the ag work group, the economic development, land use study work group, and the housing work group have now been completed, so we're going to get those compiled into our planning commission in November. Then the, the text amendments covered or not?
Did not speak to that.
Okay, just looking right now at the employment campus district and changing possibly what is allowed in that, and so that's going to planning, I'm sorry, that's going to a public hearing on September 4th, and then also looking at the adequate public facilities ordinance right now. We'll be discussing that in September. I don't know off the top of my head what those were. More, to make it more flexible, though, that it was, I was having trouble with it needing to all come in at one time for the, under the requirements that were there, so making it more flexible on the timing of what was allowed in there and what would be required at one submittal.
Any comments for Tiffany?
Not here.
Thanks for joining us. All right, moving on to old business. Discussion on the comp plan update. I think we're either going into our 13th meeting, or just completed our 13th meeting with the plan. Pardon me? 13.
Could they either show up here or get her microphone fixed? Because that's why I don't understand her when she talks. The microphone keeps cutting in now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Can you mention that to them, Jim?
Show up, be nice. I was.
I got, I got a question. So in the, the notes we read, I, I guess I forgot to bring it up at the comprehensive plan meeting, but there was a couple sentences that said about how successful Tony Town Crossing was. So do we have, like, a list of those characteristics? I mean, do we know what was so good about that, or, and is it something that we can mimic moving forward, or?
I mean, pinpoint? Yeah.
I mean, it's not, it's, it hadn't been there very long, but, you know, it does look nice, but I mean, I don't really know what was different with that one compared to the other events that we've had.
Jim, you made some good comments on that last meeting or something, I'm trying to recall what you said, but it fits right into what he's asked.
The, the things that, that I see as positives from the, from that project, and admittedly, we still need to work through a, an issue regarding the, how the state's Department of Assessments and Taxation views the corporate boundary compared to the rest of the world, because they still view part of Tony Town Crossing as not being in the city, contrary to what our maps have said for decades. But that battle aside, you know, Tony Town Crossing didn't require any additional city infrastructure. They built along existing streets, along existing water and sewer. Their stormwater management, their parking areas, their water and sewer onsite is all private. So basically, you know, there are 36 new homes in the city with no additional city infrastructure. So in that regard, that's, that's like the model for infill development, that, you know, if we see more of that, where we don't have to, you know, there are no new roads that we're going to have to maintain in perpetuity, or same thing with water and sewer. You know, that's part of why commercial or industrial development tends to have a better fiscal outlook for the city than residential, because the, the owner of the property maintains all of the infrastructure on the site typically. So nothing really, nothing gets deeded to the city for us to have to maintain out of our, you know, our tax base. So, and Tony Town Crossing, yeah, really fit that model very well. So, you know, I think they're, you know, obviously they're modern homes, but they did invoke some style cues from traditional Tony Town architecture, at least for the semi-detached units, the apartment is obviously a, a modern apartment building. But I think they, you know, they did a nice job from the design standards perspective by, you know, incorporating porches and some different, you know, styles to the porches and the dormers and things like that. But the big thing for me was, you know, the fact that there's no new infrastructure for those 36 new dwellings.
And it fit in affordability, or affordability was...
And, yeah, and certainly that's a factor as well, you know, there are a couple market rate units, but they, right, they have a number of units for varying percentages of the area median income, you know, including some very small percentages that are, you know, the rents are tailored for a relatively small percentage of the area median income. I don't remember how many units, you know, hit each percentage, but certainly that, you know, filled a need for the city, and, you know, my understanding is that they have a waitlist for people to, to move in there. And with onsite management, you know, it seems to be run well, you know, and, and certainly time will tell. But so far, you know, it's been a few years now, and, you know, we have not seen any of the negative things that were presumed that the development would, would trigger.
30-year project, too, right? The state, it's locked into the state?
They have to, right, they have to maintain those, those affordable, right? You know, the number of affordable units was locked in based on that, that tax credit program that they utilized. I, I think that was, you may be right, 30 years, I don't remember the figure, but it was, it was for quite some time that they need to maintain ownership and maintain that, that
Right, part.
Scheme for the affordability.
So there's a lot of positive with that.
I just wanted to say, having been part of Tiffany's Housing Work Group all summer at the county level, that it was recognized very widely through the county as a success story. It's not just here, but people all over the county knew about it and knew of it as a success, and pointed to it as a model. So it, it very definitely has been, from that standpoint, a success.
I think it gave us a positive. I think as we started out that project, there was a lot of negativity on that, just because of what it was advertised to be, but...
It was all Facebook negativity, so, I mean, nobody knew the facts, they were just talking.
It gave Tony Town a positive.
It's good to hear that, thanks.
And then back to the comp plan, what we mentioned tonight, we want to make sure we get that into the comp plan, too, with the, the overlay, maybe of general business area or something in this industrial area, to cover the daycares and maybe whatever else. Anything else?
I talk too much about the comp plan at the comp plan meetings, I don't need to talk about it here.
Think about the positive side of it, and this, let's hear what you have, let's hear what you have to say on the positive side, and I know how to cut it short.
I'm, I'm positive that the meetings were over in a timely manner.
While, while Harry searches for something else positive to say, we talked a little bit Tuesday about doing some sort of outreach to property owners within the growth area. Any thoughts or preferences on how we, you know, how we handle that? Do we want to basically just advise people that this, you know, process is ongoing, and invite them to attend the, the next meeting? If they have any interest in, you know, I guess basically we would tell everybody, you know, your property, thus and such, you know, ID number, whatever, whatever acres, you know, is currently within the city's growth area in our comprehensive plan, intended for future industrial use, should it come into the city limits, should it be annexed?
How would you do this, a mailing?
If you, right, I think it would be a mailing, I think it would be a, a letter customized to each, each property. Now, that, that gets a little cumbersome for Fring Road, where you've got all those little lots all along the perimeter of Ballinger Park, but at least all of their letters would, would say the same thing, at least, but, you know, but I think we would tailor it to each, you know, all in all, there aren't that many properties in the growth area. Yeah, I mean, Fring Road is the exception, where there's a bunch of, you know, small, already developed properties, but, you know, most of them are larger, you know, 20, 30, 100, or 80-acre parcels. So I don't think it would be too overwhelming to try to get a letter out to everybody that would, you know, identify their property and what its land use designation is in the current comprehensive plan, and invite them to, you know, attend or send correspondence if they, you know, are looking for any changes, something like that. So if they're happy with the way it is, and that's still their, you know, what they would like to see in the future, you know, no need to, to do anything. But if they want to see something different, or maybe, I don't know, if you want to see something different, we should tell them.
Yeah, we should at least let them know.
Can we, can we, is it feasible to have that in 30, 60 days, something like that? I mean...
Definitely 60. I don't know if we could do it in time for the September meeting or not.
The October meeting, have something, you know, we're going to talk about it on the October date, whatever it is.
I think we have enough on, on the September already.
Well, well, this would be for the comp plan meeting and not the regular meeting, but, yeah. I, I was thinking that initially, and then it clicked, it's wait, this is the Tuesday meeting, not the Monday meeting.
60 days would certainly be plenty of time, I mean...
Yeah.
I mean, for us to get the information back.
And, and also, we're, we're hoping to hire a, a new position for the city was created this budget year, that's an administrative assistant that'll be helping the mayor and all the department heads, as well as myself. So when that person is, is on board, maybe they could, you know, help out with, with, you know, doing the mail merge and typing things up and getting things out in the mail, things like that, so...
How you doing with the planning director, the new planning director?
Where are we at with that?
Or code, what is it going to be, planning or code?
It's... I mean, the, the position is really both, just like it was when I had it and when Darrell had it. We are having conversations with, with a candidate that had a very strong application currently, but, you know, I haven't, I don't have a signed offer letter from the candidate at this point, so the mayor is hoping that, you know, he'll be able to appoint someone for that position, as well as that executive administrative assistant position in, in September.
September, okay, that's coming up.
So I hope we're, I hope we're close, and, you know, I mean, we, we do have a, a strong candidate and are having conversations now with them. So hopefully we will get a, come to terms and have their name before council in September.
Does it take that person a year, six months to a year, just to get on board?
And, right. The, the individual has, has a lot of experience, but, you know, they'll need to become familiar with, with Tony Town. So, you know, that, you know, it'll be a different sort of learning curve. Development review and planning and, and zoning administration, you know, are all things that fall under the umbrella of their experience, but not in Tony Town.
As long as within our region, I don't want to say within our state, because we have Pennsylvania, but someone familiar with our region.
Yeah.
Be ideal.
I'm cautiously optimistic I will be able to come to terms with them and, and have that name before council next month.
Anything else, any other comments? Or other business? Not? Chris, you finished, Tiffany? All right, then I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Won't everybody vote?
Everybody wants to sit here.
If not, we can find other subjects.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second by Bill. Other discussion, all those in favor of the motion to adjournments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Jim.